As we get ready to start, I hear people online with their mics on. If you could check and make sure those are muted, thank you.
Open it now. Crackle, crackle.
Yep.
No, she's not in discussion or voting.
But we appreciate her being on.
But yes, to be current.
To keep up with what's going on.
All right. My clock is saying it's six o'clock. We've validated all the online stuff is working. Let's go ahead and call to order the September 10th meeting of the city council. All right, if you'd please start by joining us in the pledge of allegiance. I've asked Eric to lead us today.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Eric.
All right.
You don't say Jesus.
Hopefully that'll work, thank you. All right, can we start with a roll call, please?
Westwood.
Here.
Conley.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Keith.
Miller.
Here.
Ronnie.
Here.
Stupin.
Here.
I'd like to call out that council member Chris Keys is not with us today. She is not feeling well and didn't want to risk infecting anybody. So she will not be participating in the discussion, nor will she be voting per our charter. But at the same time, she has the sense of dedication that all of our council members do. And so if they're able to, they still sit in just for currency and to be aware. And they may have conversations during the public time when you are all invited to speak as well. But just to kind of set the expectation, if some of you see her online, she is there, similar to what Doug was a couple of weeks back. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by council member Conley and a second by council member Ronnie. Any discussion? Hearing none, I assume that means folks are good with that. Let's go ahead and have a vote on that. And if I can have somebody flip off the air conditioner, if you're in that vicinity, it's the dial on the left. Apologize. Go ahead and do a vote.
Yeah.
Daniel.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Stupin.
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from August 13th and 27th. Motioner's preference whether to do those individually or together.
I move to approve the minutes of August 13th and August 27th as written.
Second.
All right, motion by council member Conley, second by council member Ronnie. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll move along and do a roll call.
Conley.
Yeah.
Daniel.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Stupin.
Yes.
Did I hear Ronnie twice, or was that just my ears?
It was your ears.
Right.
Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion on warrants payable so that we can then start the discussion.
I move to approve warrants payable in the amount of $989,142 and 82 cents.
I second.
All right, I have a motion by council member Daniel, second by council member Conley. Discussion.
I just had just a note here. I saw underwater bills for various buildings. The tennis courts water bill was $1,708. Perhaps it should be relabeled if it's not just the tennis courts. Is it the whole park that includes the tennis courts?
It's field school park.
Then perhaps that's what it should say.
How much is that from an overhead to change that so it represents field school? All right, noted.
All right, it's just tennis courts isn't field school. It's just.
Okay.
And then the other question I had is under sewer and water energy labs, most of the sewer lab work, water, whatever, was $200 or $300, except for on August 28th, it was $1,532.
Just depends on whatever testing is required. During the summer months, they have other testing because of the water warming up and stuff. So.
Higher test requirements.
Sewers, yeah. So the majority of that is the sewers because we discharge into the creek. If we didn't have to discharge, we wouldn't have any of those. But since we discharge, we are required by DEQ to test. And some of the tests are a lot more expensive.
I guess so.
I hate to do this, and you can decline, but we happen to have a member of our Public Works here. Do you want to add anything to kind of the testing of an overview?
Just like Ronnie said, it's certain times of year we have different tests to do that require a lot more testing.
Those are my only two question marks.
And just so everyone knows, it looks like $631,000 of that $989,000 is for the stormwater project.
There was a substantial pass through as well.
Yeah. $989,000.
Yeah, CDBG, yeah.
We normally don't spend a million dollars in.
I would like to add my thank you, and I hope the public notices that you aren't just rubber stamping things as they go through, that you are looking, you are questioning. And if something stands out, I appreciate you doing that. I also appreciate the comments that let the public know that, so thank you. Any other comments on warrants payable? Let's go ahead with a vote.
Conley.
Yes.
Daniel. Miller.
Yes.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Stupin.
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. All right, mayor's business. So few notes here. First off, the fire on Mount Maurice was confirmed as out today at 1:30. So that is done, and thanks to all the team that helped work on that and that also kept us posted as that activity was happening. It was not particularly big. They helicoptered a couple of folks in last night. And the first thought was they were going to be able to report it last night. And then they said, well, I'll tell you tomorrow it's out. And so they did, and that's appreciated. Rocky Fork Inn, so the acquisition was completed last week on Thursday. So that piece of property is now owned by the city. We had people on site doing a walkthrough for the remediation. So there's three kind of sub-steps of the next phase, which is the getting it back to ground zero. So that is the remediation, the demolition, which is the non-special stuff. And then there's also a bank stabilization project. So they were in doing a walkthrough of the demolition and ready to go. And we were talking with the folks at FEMA and were asked to hold off until they get a funding letter confirmation for the teardown parts. We already know the funding, the funding has arrived, the check cleared. So it's more of a paper trail and a process. They said that will not be later than the end of the month. It would be before October 1st. It could be significantly before October 1st. So Tetra Tech works with state DEQ, and so they are doing the remediation, so all of the hazardous materials. I have asked them to lead the bid process for the teardown as well. We've had several people that have expressed interest. This is something that they are far more familiar with than we are. It also takes out any question of, you know, so-and-so knows who or whatnot to do that. Plus, those two pieces have to work together. So again, we're waiting for some additional feedback information from FEMA. As far as on the house, we worked with the previous owners. In fact, we have called out to them to give them one more opportunity to go through the property and reclaim any personal items. For simplicity's sake, personal items are going to be those things that did not impact the appraisal of the property. So fixtures, attachments, doors, cabinets, all that stuff is part of the appraisal. That is now the city's. In addition to that, in consulting with Kathy, I also reached out to the senior center and to DSVS. And we have asked them, and I will get feedback from this week, if they would like to go through and see if there's anything that can be donated from the personal property things. We've had some individuals who had reached out, and I elected to just go with the organizations where that stuff was actually going to end up and have them say, yes, we want that, or no, we don't want that. So they will be given the opportunity to do that for personal materials. The request on the RFP for the demolition is, there was some question is, you know, what if two bids come in because somebody's recycling the roof or the siding and whatnot? And so that is being built into the RFP process for them to say how they are handling those materials, which could be recycled or put to a second use. So that will be part of the bid proposals and be considered in the bid selection process. That was a question that had come up quite a bit about that. As soon as we get the okay, you'll see that demolition and remediation start in rapid order. Again, enough people chomping at the bit, I don't think we're going to have any problems. I say that having witnessed a half inch possible turn into four feet on October 1st. But the expectation is that we will have that leveled this year before winter hits, or at least before second winter.
Is the property stable enough to have people walking through it?
It is, but we will, it's not an open free-for-all at this point. It is specific permission.
By invitation.
Situation, yeah. By invitation is a good way to do it. So before, when they had it, we had to get the owner's permission to do that. Now the owner's is us.
Is us.
But the same access is being handled. One thing that is worth mentioning is the one deviation from I just said on materials is there's been conversation, I believe the intent is we're going to capture the weather bane from the top of the building and save that as part of the memorialization and whatever goes there next.
Okay.
Good idea.
So.
So, but the owner will have the opportunity to go in first and.
And she has said she's done, and I called and re-offered again. And so, and before any demolition happens, I'll just make sure that we've forefull checked the bases. Any other questions or comments on the Rocky Fork Inn? All right, there's been some FEMA paving going on the last week or two. We've received several complaints. I've received some complaints, the front office, I know council members have received some concerns about whether people were being notified. We had asked the contractors, and again, we're dealing with two different contractors because we've got the stormwater project and then the FEMA paving project. We've asked them to put in place the notification processes, and they've indicated they've done so. However, we've also seen enough breakdowns that we are stepping that up, and we've asked for basically either they put in closed-loop positive controls or loop us into it. One of the things it's going to do is particularly as we're getting easier down to it. So we have 47 days left of the stormwater project. It's tight, but it's just because it was a very, very aggressive schedule, and we knew there was a possibility, depending on whether we may or may not finish it this year. But what they're going to do is they're going to take that area that is left, and they're going to break it off into some small sections and put in what those estimated dates are. We're getting close enough that they can start to sign some preliminary dates with the expectation that they may slide or move forward. But again, just as part of that information, and as we get that mapped down, we're going to put that online. It'll be in the news section, so you can go online and see like, when is it going to be in my area? The other comment on the FEMA project is that was dictated by FEMA. They are very particular. So as you drive around and look at some of the paving done where the flood was, you may see some things that you think that's really interesting. Why did they pave both sides of the road and not the middle? Or why did they pave to the road, and then there's a line and it quit? And the answer is, when FEMA came in, they said, here's where we'll pave, here's where we won't pave. And so that's the, you're certainly welcome to call and ask, but just know that as we go out there, the people with the checkbook dictated the parameters, and we act, we ask. Stormwater, so there was a public notice that went out last week that there was a possibility that there was, it was the intention that there would be a detour on Broadway from 10th and 12th, basically going around the intersection of 11th. They didn't know if that was going to be Monday or Tuesday, and they threw in Wednesday just to cover their bases. The piece that we had dependency on came in today. So at this point, it looks like there's going to be a very, very long day tomorrow. And so downtown is open. In fact, Broadway, they're going to try to have it shut off only one side at a time. So it'll either be northbound will go through, like detour for the southbound traffic, or vice versa. The plan is to have it be a long day and have both sides of the intersection done. The detours, there's only one cut going across Broadway at this point. And the goal is to have that done tomorrow. There's a possibility it may run into Thursday. But there is every expectation that's going to be done, and plenty of time for the homecoming parade on Friday, which is one of the lines of questioning we've had on that. Questions or comments on either the FEMA paving or the stormwater? There will be a future main cut going through on 8th Street in the future, but far enough out that we don't have a date on that yet. So that's kind of the immediate future of what we're going to see as far as impact to traffic. Sidewalks on Broadway. So for those in the public who may not be aware of this, one of the things that we included in our budget, there is almost daily, if you spend very much time on Broadway, you will see people trip and some amazing catches before they face plants. There's basically, most of that is a side effect of a water project that the city did several years ago. The good news is that meant we knew who it was to take care of it and fix it. So we will be doing that in the very near future, like within the next week or two. We have ordered a grinder that we will be doing. And then we have a contractor who's coming in and doing the lifting. They did a test lift down in front of Musley Keys. If you're kind of curious to go see what it looks like before it's ground. They drill holes, stick it underneath, and do that little foamy stuff, like stuff, and it picks up the pavement and does that. They are specifically working to try to get that done mostly in the morning so that there's minimal impact to businesses. We have had a little bit of moderation feedback on that, that the hotel, the Pollard, has indicated that five o'clock in the morning or, you know, early in the morning is not a good choice to not disrupt their business. So we're working with them to do that as well. And it's worth mentioning that we're also working with the major businesses like IGA and stuff on the road projects, so we don't impact like truck delivery days and stuff. We got a speed feedback sign installed. This is the temporary unit, not the portable unit, installed on the south end of town today. And I actually had opportunity to go down and sit and watch it for half an hour, and I will tell you it is making a difference. So that's a temporary, while we are working on the longer-term, three big signs, which by the way, also in the budget for those who are not new, or who haven't been to the meetings. The only other thing, and I think I'll go ahead and mention it here just from a very, very high level. It came up in the Public Works meeting, this is the early discussion. There is an issue or a concern, an opportunity within Red Lodge. When people, so we meter the water that goes into a home. The assumption is that any water that goes into the home through the meter leads through the sewer pipes. When that is not the case is if you're using it to water your lawn. And so historically, there has been available, I don't know that everybody has necessarily known, but there has been the option to install a second meter that measures your irrigation. It does not change what you pay for the water, but it allows you to not pay sewer usage for the difference of those two. It turns out that meters are hard to come by. We have a lot of new construction and meters failing, so we're needing to use those. And so the front office has been doing some brainstorming and some looking at it. And the idea that will probably be coming forth to council in the future is that during the summer months, during that three months when people are watering their lawns, that what we do is we just put a cap on the sewer usage at 8,000 gallons. So which the average is about 62. So what that means is as people are watering their lawns, they're not going to be paying for sewer that in reality, we aren't processing. And so we're going to get pretty much similar to the same results we have. Everybody will get it, it won't be, you have to install a meter first, and we won't be using a meter. So because that equates to a utility change that will come to council, there will be a couple of readings and public hearings, there will be public notices that go out. So it'll basically be all of the things that are involved with the utility change. I don't expect we'll get any negative comments because this is all going down. But that's in the process of being worked on, so look at that as kind of like what we're going to do during the winter. Questions, comments?
I had one question, and that was on the sidewalk in front of the Stillwater Bus Parking Lot in Roosevelt, where it's longer than six feet. Are we doing anything on that? Is that MDT or?
It is MDT, and we are. So what we are doing right now is we are focusing on the things that are the city's responsibility first. Our Public Works Director is having a follow-up meeting with MDOT. We're going into that meeting armed with, here's what we've done on the things that are our responsibility. Here's what we need you to do to step on your responsibility. And there's actually several items on that list, everything from the roundabout to those patches of the sidewalks that are part of that conversation.
And the street signs that don't say north or south on Broadway.
Yes, yes. So like I said, there's a long and developing list on that.
Okay.
I will make a note because, to your point, it would be worth it to review the list for MDOT with council before we go meet with them just to see if there's anything that you guys have identified that we've overlooked and not put on that list. So I imagine that'll probably come via the Public Works Standing Committee meeting.
Or Public Safety or?
Probably Public Works just because of the nature of MDOT. But then forefull council, so everybody's involved.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? All right. Lots of stuff. School resource officer. So following our budget approval at the last meeting, I reached out to the school board president and said, we had approved it, and we are ready to, the city is ready to move forward with the 75-25 funding that was discussed initially. Please let us know when you and your board have decided if you'd like to move forward. And I received feedback back from him that says he will meet with his board next week, and will probably know before the next meeting whether they'd like to move forward with that or not. So there's no further action that needs to come from council to do that, but I'll mention it in mayor's comments, just so you know it's there.
Thank you.
Utility easements. This is a late development, so it did not make the agenda as far as discussions. We have two utility easements that have been asked for. One of them is from Bear Tooth Electric. This is some land, and we'll include these in the packet next time for discussion and then action the following time, so it's four weeks out. Unless council says, just give it to us and let get it done. But I kind of like our, everything comes public once and then action the next time. But basically what they're doing is they are taking down some overhead lines, and they are burying some lines that actually traverse the piece of land up there that we lease out and that we also use as the sewer sledgefield. And so that requires an easement. And basically easements are basically a designation of city land, which means that it basically has to be city council, that it's the legislative body's job to sign off on those. Okay? So I anticipate we've got that easement. They've been reviewed by Public Works. They've been reviewed by attorney. I've not necessarily got the feedback from him. I have not confirmed that I've received all the feedback he has for us on those. But I've asked him to put together the resolution so that you'll have those next time for discussion and then the following time for action.
I would be actually okay with it being an action item next time because you just told us about it. But it's up to us to council, I guess.
I'm fine with that as well.
It's pretty straightforward.
A utility easement. I mean, don't they already have an easement for the overhead lines?
This will be a different one, yeah.
Yeah. But it's the same. Same location? Yeah, same location.
It actually isn't. This is a little bit different. But the feedback from Public Works is it doesn't matter because it's underground. So that's there.
Well, it always matters.
If it's council's pleasure, I'm certainly, what I'll do based on feedback that I've heard is we will put it for action. But again, at the time, if there's anybody who's uncomfortable with that, council obviously has the option to modify the agenda or at the time of action, move to forward it, so. Ronnie?
Marty, if you're from Bear Tooth Electric too, if you guys have.
Oh, hi!
I know, that's why I'm here.
He came to talk on.
Yeah. Did you want to speak on any of that tonight while you're here, Marty?
Absolutely, if I may.
Absolutely.
So Marty Conley with Bear Tooth Electric. I ambushed the city a month or so ago about our desire to take down some overhead three-phase lines and bury the underground three-phase lines.
Will you tell them that you just gave me the actual hard copy three days ago so they don't hang me and think how come?
Yeah, well, just yesterday.
Happened yesterday.
You just actually got the hard stuff yesterday. I brought in some maps that show our route that we'd like to take. And what I've done are existing overhead lines that we're removing are in a real bad spot. They were put in probably in the 50s and 60s. And went to some homes that sites up there. Anyway, they're not in a great spot, and they've, they're really getting to the end of their life and maintaining them, and it is really becoming a struggle. So we've identified a new route through Bill Palmer's, Dustin Spalding's, and then on into the city property. And Bill and Dustin are all on board with everything we're doing, the routes through their place. Mike Maples, you know, I showed him the maps of where we would like to go. I met with both of the leesies that have livestock up there. We spoke about the route and the project and the process of which we'll use our plow cat to plow in the lines, so. And just one thing that I'm very mindful of when I engineer stake a job like this is that if this was my property, how would I want it to be? The route that I took through the city property actually follows, a good bit of it follows the outside of an existing underground fiber line that drops off the hill and beats town and the city. So I'm trying to keep our corridor kind of parallel with that corridor until a point where we'll break off and go east along Dustin Spalding's north property line, and then eventually turn and go north along and parallel in what you guys would say is our existing overhead three-phase line. And there's going to be a couple of three-phase cabinets that will be placed in that corridor towards the north end and Spalding's. And it will be available to be tapped in those spots in the future. You know, I know some of the possibilities would be pivots to deal with wastewater. Anyway, we'll have some three-phase cabinets that we'll be able to come out of. They're about this tall and about six feet wide, about three feet deep. Otherwise, the rest of it will be buried 36 to 42 inches deep with our plow cap, so. I think that's the high points. And as the mayor said, yeah, we're getting right up against, we don't know whether we're going to get one inch, one foot, or four feet, so we're kind of, we're really kind of wanting to get fired up and going here. And as soon as we get easements, we're going to try to be going on this the week from winter here. So we sure appreciate the opportunity, if we can, to get all this stuff in a better place.
Have you had a survey completed on this already?
So no land surveys. What I've done with the engineering work is, you know, I've worked with Bill and Dustin on identifying their property lines. on identifying their property lines. And then Jim Bushnell had showed me some of the interior boundaries and, and that's kind of what I'm going along is, is I know there's a piece of new fence up there that was recently surveyed and put online and I'm using that as my.
Property line?
Compass and guide, so, good question.
Are you going to be abandoning the old easement?
And that is something that we can do. We can do a release of easement on that if that is, and, and I, I can, absolutely. So. And all of that overhead line will come out all the way through Spalding's and Palmers and towards the north end of your northeast corner near Dell Road and East Bench Road, you've got the old Mini Young Place. Mr. McGregor owns that, has a business there. That, that overhead pole is going to stay and possibly one or two poles to the south will stay and be overhead. In the future, we may try to continue burying bigger cable north, but at this time, that's the, the budget that we have to do. So we'll, we'll be getting at least to there.
So East Bench will still have overhead?
Yeah, right, correct. Yep, a lot of that stuff that, that runs north along the East Bench Road, of course, it's accessible by the county roads. Decently, this piece here is just, just absolutely a, a bear cat in the winter, so it's not good for reliability or then when you got to dig in three, four feet of snow to get to a place and then find out that now you just found in an irrigation ditch that's three feet deeper. So we, we struggle with it. It's been pretty good. It's, it's been the test of time, but it's time to move forward.
All right. So I will plan on putting those on with action and then if there is any questions, I've written down a couple of questions that, that we can, we'll cover with legal. So that I mentioned, there was two, that's one of the two. The second one is actually with Northwest and it has to do with the leases for, or, utilities for hangers at the airport. So as they were getting there working, they realized they don't have a lease for where the lease line's in there and since that's city land, we really should have an, an easement in place for them to do that. The ongoing maintenance is, is county, is, is the Airport Board, which is us in the county, but the leases is for the utilities at the airport. So that's the second of two. All right. Downtown Master Plan. On the nineteenth, there's going to be a meeting most of the day. This is to update the downtown master plan. One of the things I've observed is I've talked to, to people of the public and, and quite frankly, even people involved in the process sometimes, is we have to stop and remind them if we're talking about the growth policy, which we are also updating at the current time versus the downtown master plan. Both of them are kind of visioning documents. The, the growth policy, there's a draft online if you go to the Planning Board. The downtown master plan, the, the conversation with the Planning Board is that they want to get that community input without creating a draft and saying, "Here's what it is, tweak it." They want to get that computing, community input of what that downtown vision looks like. It's a, it's a little different than our growth policy and it gets adhered to pretty closely by people doing development down in the business district. So that is several times, like eleven o'clock, a two o'clock, a four o'clock and an eight o'clock. There's several online, it's, it's been run online in the paper. We've had the request to make that link available remotely. I have not got it free to yet, but we will have a link available online that you can get to by going to the news and meetings. It'll be available just for, a lot of business owners have an interest in being there but don't have the ability to leave for two hours for their business. So that'll be available as well.
There are three two-hour sessions, ten to noon, two to four and six to eight.
Thank you.
And the Planning Board members do plan to be there for additional questions?
And, and there are specific focuses, so like one of them is the community at large, one of them is the downtown businesses and one of them is, is a tourism focus. So there's a lot of overlap between those, but, and everybody's welcome to attend any or all of those. The public is welcome to be, be part of those. And then we'll take those results and give them to a planning firm and say, "Now we'll create the vision that we are not quite seeing on our own," but with that input and guidance from the community at large.
And I might also point out that if somebody plans to attend those meetings, you might pull up online on the city website, the nineteen eighty-six revitalization plan, which was the last time that we did something for the downtown. And it was very thorough and has been followed and quoted and used. So it's actually a really good plan as a place to perhaps start.
Is the two thousand and six Main Street Plan online as well?
I didn't get that far. I only got as far as the revitalization plan.
We do have it on the Chase it Down list and see if we can find it.
Okay, because it, it's a really good.
That was also really good, yeah.
Yeah, it's a really good plan. It does, it does cover a lot of what has happened downtown as well.
Do you know, is that a, is that a?
What year was that?
An updated replacement or is that just a secondary plan?
I think it was two thousand and six. Is that something right?
It's a supplemental. And what was it called?
It was, we, we did it to be part of the Main Street program and it was the downtown, like what we thought downtown Red Lodge should look like. It was a vision for downtown.
I remember some part of that, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Probably have it at home somewhere. Twenty years ago.
All right. Airport. I have received some feedback, I was not at the meeting, but that the other mayor involved has some feedback for us. I've not had a chance to follow and get what his changes are, so same, same old, same old on that. There is a grant coming to basically put a cap on the runway. So this is a, like a significant, like in the hundreds of thousands, private grant that is coming in because that is improvements on city land. I'm not sure what the form will be yet, but I think there will be a resolution or something that says, so basically there, there's got to be a grant that's got to be offered, they're going to have what their terms are and then we're basically going to say, "Yes, we take your money."
Don't they still have another plan that they're going to apply to the FAA?
So, so there's an FAA plan that they're looking at, but that funding is six to ten years out. Before, before that would be like a coming and, and the, the master plan that's being developed is several years out, so this is a, a holdover until then. So just, just by way of information to be aware of that and as, as that comes in, I, I believe it'll be something that, that is appropriate to run through council before it's approved and accepted.
Yeah.
It's, it's development on city land, right? So just like easement.
Who applied for that grant? So the private grant?
It really was not so much an applied, it was the grantor community came and said, "We have some money we'll give you, but there's some strings a-tied." And, and the strings are not significant, the strings are, they want to make sure that it's maintained properly mostly.
Okay.
And the strings will be the Airport Board, I think, more than the city. But because it's an improvement on city land, council, council should buy off on it. There is a reintroduction of a potential land swap up on the top of Brewery Hill that we had talked about previously and it kind of came and it went and it's back up for discussion now. So I'm going to try to meet with that landowner and the city attorney and, and see if that's something, but that process would basically be the same thing we did with YWS. You know, adjacent properties and a broker comparison, making sure the city comes out on the top end of that deal. But just throwing that out there, that, that's something that could be coming up. And it could be tied to the discussions, it, it could influence or impact, although it seems maybe like less so now, but it could be part of the discussions about the price-protected housing development potential up there. I'm, I'm trying to pick the right words because people say workforce housing or affordable housing and, and what we're really looking for is a subsidizer of price-protected housing. And so that's kind of the projects that we've, we've got two or three interested folks that are reaching out. We're trying to figure out what is the right way to do those developments. So a lot of conversations between now and when we get there, but I also just want to do my part to make sure everything is out and in the open. I think that's all. Oh, no, 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 no. Wait, that's actually on the agenda, so I'll save that. Anything else from the mayor that I was supposed to update that I forgot to update or that you would like to ask about? Other than that, we really haven't been doing much.
I know. You're slacking.
Want to make sure people are getting their four hundred dollars worth. All right, I get. We are at the point on the agenda where we will have public comments, so this is an opportunity for the public to comment on anything on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, and, and I will preface that with there's also will be a time for public comment about anything within the city's jurisdiction at the end of the meeting. If you would like to speak, if you step up to the podium and state your name and where you live in general terms, it doesn't have to be like your exact address, and then direct your comments to me and I will go ahead and open the public comment at this time. We'll start with those in the room. Man, there's a lot of people online.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
That's Marty saying goodbye, that's my public comment. Thank you, Marty. All right, anybody in the room who'd like to speak? All right, we'll turn to online. Council Observer Keith, did you have anything you wanted to throw in there? Now is a lovely time to jump in.
No, but thank you for asking. I'm, I'm listening intently.
All right, thank you. Going twice, going three times, we'll go ahead and close that portion of public comment. Action items. So the first thing that we have is actually not a resolution, it is a, it'll, it'll obtain a motion and because of how this, I'm trying to think procedurally how to do this, what I would like to do is give it, just a quick presentation on it and then I will entertain a motion that basically for, to approves the mayor to execute a work order, a task order for the Brewery Hill Trail feasibility study, which was in the packet. So this is another one of those things that we started on right at the first of the year and as it has pro, developed, we reached out to MDOT about having a trail down Brewery Hill. We were received positively. I have enlisted Bear Tooth Trails and some of those folks there and so Nick is, is kind of helping head this up and, and, and move on. Basically, MDOT has indicated that they are in full favor and that there are grants coming out that will actually even pay for it. Their advice has been that in order to do that, we should do a feasibility study to submit with that. There's a timeline that we need to get this in by the end of this year and then the award is early next year. We've reached out to Great West Engineering, who does a lot of our engineering studies for us. They came back with an estimated cost of twenty-four thousand. We reached out to the Urban Renewal District who last night approved recommending, covering fifty percent of the cost of that from the urban renewal. Their recommendation, and, and again, so ultimately that will be another action that council, so Urban Renewal District just makes recommendation to council. Council would actually have to have a resolution that pays for this down the road to do that. But their resolution was in keeping with maximizing their funds, that they would like to cover half of that, so twelve thousand, providing that there was matches to meet the rest. We have reached out to Bear Tooth Trails as well as the three homeowners associations up there, Red Lodge Country Club Estates, Alpine and the Spires, and they have all indicated they will help contribute to that. So I think this twenty-four thousand dollars is basically half from donations and half from the urban renewal. And what I'm looking for tonight, hopefully, is approval to go ahead and execute and sign the task order so that we can go ahead and get that feasibility done before the snow interferes and then we're ready to apply for the grant to actually build the trail. Questions, comments?
So does the feasibility study then determine the best path of the trail?
That is, that is part of it. They've actually kind of walked along it already and, and have some ideas, but yes, that is part of what the feasibility study is going to do.
And would they also be contacting those property owners to see if, you know, they're willing to allow that on their property as part of the feasibility study? Or is that just a job afterward?
The primary property owner from all the research at this point is actually MDOT because they have, they have a significant part about that. Most of the discussions had to do with which side as far as how much drainage was going to be, have to be accounted for. I think the, the leading ideas, I understand it, so I'll put that as a, that capitalization on it, is that it actually is talking about starting on the north side of the road, so it would attach to the existing trail that's up there, coming down to about where Alpine is. And then crossing the road, having another one of the little yellow stop signs, which may also instigate a conversation about getting that speed limit down to twenty-five on that hill. And then that would come across the hill there and pick up and continue on the south side in the final stretch. So they, that, that's what the first walkthrough.
Be tight on that.
Kind of indicated, but, but again, that's what the purpose of the feasibility study is.
Do you need a motion?
I, I, I need a motion to approve the mayor to sign the task order.
Then we should have discussion.
Well, because there, yeah.
I move to approve the mayor to sign the task order, to allow the mayor to sign the task order.
I have a motion from Councilmember Conley. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilmember Daniels. Is there any additional discussion now that it's formally opened with a motion?
Honestly, where would the best place be for people to donate to this project so we can hopefully preserve as much of our urban renewal district funds as possible?
I would say reach out to.
The RTA?
To, to, well, it's Bear Tooth Trails now, it is not the RTA anymore. So reach out to Nick at Bear Tooth Trails and I am quite confident they would continue to accept donations specifically for that. And, and that would actually allow us to use less urban renewal district dollars.
And with the urban renewal district dollars, have we actually figured out how much urban renewal district dollars we have?
We have. It's in the neighborhood of one-twenty, one-twenty?
I thought it was ninety-five dollars.
Okay, well, I thought it was one-forty-eight, so.
Well, we're currently what's sitting in there is like ninety-five dollars.
Okay.
That, that's what our budget showed last week, or two weeks ago.
Thank you, yep, sorry, I just. This has been a lot of.
Yeah, there's been a lot. And, and, and by the way, the, the question on it was not that it took them that long to calculate and get those numbers, there was some checkboxes in the system that allowed it to flow through that were not checked.
And on that note too, has the urban renewal district come up with a criteria for how they're distributing them?
They did, so they have and it, and so one of the questions that came up last night is because they had talked about, but they had not instigated basically that they wanted to get to two or three hundred thousand. So there is a criteria, but that criteria that they were relying on is primarily within the ordinance that was passed by council. And, and this particular project literally hit every single one of the criteria when they had the discussion.
I am just double checking my boxes because I'm one hundred percent supportive of this, so.
Other questions or comments?
I look forward to the feasibility study to show exactly where that trail would best be.
One of the, one of the other issues.
Very scary to have it cross in the middle of a downhill hill when it's icy in the winter.
I was just thinking.
Yeah, that's a really sketchy spot to have that cross.
But yeah, I guess we'll leave that to the engineers to tell us.
One, one of the other things that kind of came up in this conversation is the grant, this is a competition-based grant, a competitive grant. And so one of the things that was helpful, and this is one of the reasons the urban renewal district wanted to be in there, is so here's the letter of support and contributions from Urban Renewal.
Gotcha.
HOA one, HOA two, HOA three, Bear Tooth Trails. So they were looking for, and ultimately one from city council as well. So they're looking for that as far as to garner support. I think our odds are good going into it. I think our odds improve with somebody who knows the process leading us through it. Other comments or questions? All right. Hearing none. May I get a vote, please?
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniels?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Subin?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. I will entertain a motion for ordinance nine sixty amended.
I have to have a public.
Pardon? Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna do a public hearing before we do-
Before you open.
Do, do I have the option of doing a little bit of discussion before we do the public hearing, just so people know what they're commenting on?
Yeah, you can, yeah, yeah, you can give a little-
Oh, so I won't do, the public hearing just happens before, has to happen before the vote, right?
Yeah.
So, I will start by entertaining a motion. This is exciting, stop!
This is not empty, you know.
I will entertain a motion on ordinance 960.
I would move to approve ordinance 960 first amended. Actually, is it first amended?
It is.
Yes, because it was a brand new one.
You're, you're getting it confused with the second amended, otherwise.
I am, I am.
We have a lot of, uh, uh, uh- An ordinance of the city of Red Lodge, Montana to repeal and replace ordinance 928, 928A, 151 amendment, and the municipal code pertaining to event permits and regulations for the use of city-owned property as governed in Title 8, Chapter 8, use of city-owned property.
Thank you, you read very well, do I have a second? Have a motion by Councilmember Conley, and a second by Councilmember Daniels. Before we open up for, um, a public hearing, uh, is there any discussion that we'd like to have, and we will have discussion after public hearing as well, I'll bring it back.
Uh, essentially, the only changes that are actually happening within this ordinance is, uh, under application section A, it will just say that the fees will be approved by resolution of the city, uh, versus just saying approved by city council, so that way it will actually be done through resolution. And the applicant must provide the following informa, or provide the following information as requested, so it doesn't necessarily mean that all of these different criteria pieces have to be provided just as requested. So that way for small events and large events, there's some flexibility over not over asking.
We ask the appropriate amount of information, but the ordinance says what's there, and the small event will just ask for that.
Five words.
Five words, we added five words.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Oh goodness, seven words.
Yeah, 'cause there's two spots.
As requested.
All right, is there anything else that anybody feels is pertinent to share before we open it up for public comment? Hearing nothing from the table, I will go ahead and open public comment for first reading, did we say that on the, on, on the motion, did we say first reading?
I'm sure I did.
All right, okay, excellent. Um, so let the record show, let's go ahead and open up the public comment on ordinance 960. Start out in the room? Dealer? Online? Going twice? Going three times, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the table. Any further discussion from the table? I will add that we did hear back from the city attorney who had a chance to review it and indicated he had no issues, so we were, there was a question earlier today, um, he had said he had a chance to review it, but we didn't have what that feedback was, so we got the feedback, uh, in time to take action tonight if council chooses to do so.
So, um, my only question was, I mean, we had created the, the small event, the end of resolution for the small event, you know, under 75,000, and we did-
Under 75,000?
I said 75 people, I'm sorry, I'm reading a million here, um, as to the insurance, and in that we said they only needed to carry 500,000 under small event, but we never actually addressed that in this ordinance. We still show a million, so I don't know if we need to amend that and say that for small events under 75 people-
I think we reviewed that.
Did we do that?
I did in my large event.
Yeah, see, the large event says you have to have a million, the one on 960, but I don't know that we ever set the small event insurance amount in ordinance 960, because we kind of did, Terry was there, I think we did this first, and then we created the small event application, so we kind of did it backwards.
May I ask, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why, what is the thinking behind the liability being less for a small event than a large event?
Because there's under 75 people in attendance, and typically it's, yeah, it's the difference between a, a large event where you have, or a street closure where you're going to need more-
But if I tripped and split my head open?
That, that, the chance, the larger the event, the higher the risk.
Okay.
Let's put it that way.
That was my question.
Yes.
Jody, can you please tell, tell me where you're referring to, so I can read it? 888.
There's a hard copy if you want to look at it in the bag.
Thank you, careful.
And I, I just, and we also, on the application, we require 2 million if there's alcohol involved or a street closure. So, we, I think we need to address that in this ordinance, bec, if you're gonna list the million, then I think you need to address the fact that if they have alcohol or a street closure, they need 2 million, and if they, if it's a small event-
There's a lot-
It says or as set by resolution.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, I think we had reserved, like, looked at that same thing-
Perfect, okay.
And there was that-
No, thank you.
Included, so.
Yep, I missed that, so thank you, I just saw the million.
I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure we went over that, and I just wanted to confirm.
I know, I just, we had it set or as to protect the city, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause it also means that they could also ask for more, um, depending on the scale.
Yeah, because we, we did, we increased it to 2 million for a street closure, and if there's alcohol involved.
Does, does this include the option of going lower, though? I mean, it doesn't say otherwise.
Or as set by resolution.
Or as set, $1.
So, the resolution for small events is 500,000, so they can use their homeowner's policy or their renter's policy to extend to that, so.
And, and that, that makes sense if it's basically what the homeowners, what is the standard homeowner's umbrella, isn't that a million dollars, though?
Yeah, but not everybody has an umbrella, but your homeowner's policy and your renter's policy will go up to 500,000.
Oh, that, so that's where that number came from?
Correct.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, yeah. So, never mind, I think we're covered.
Any further discussion at the table? Hearing none, I will go ahead and, uh, let's have a vote on ordinance 960, first reading.
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniels?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Jupe?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Just didn't want to have to go back and read this.
I, I appreciate that, and that's, that's why we do these multiple times, right?
I know.
And that will come before, um, that will come before council again, and have another public hearing and a second reading, and if by some chance there should be an amendment that is made, um, then there would be yet another one, because there has to be two consecutive with the same wording that needs to be done. All right, that concludes the business portion of the meeting within the first hour.
Yay!
All right, let's go ahead and move on to, uh, the council portion of the agenda, we'll start with public health and safety, and I will look to, and, and by the way, I will add here, um, that since there is no action being here, this is just council discussion, um, I think that, uh, if our council member wants to, uh, join in in these parts of the discussions, it would be appropriate and permissible via our charter. So this is just a council work session at this point, so, we'll start out with, uh, public health and safety, and I'll look to Committee Chair Conley.
Yes, um, we, we, we've been very fortunate that the chief of police attends these meetings, so a lot of our, uh, questions have been answered. Chrissy and Danae are, are working on, with Lexipol, and doing grant research, especially for the, uh, for the school resource officer. Um, we had quite a bit of discussion on how to protect the city in future years, because it's gotten to the point where the, our public health and safety is the majority of our general fund, and our general fund is, has been going down what's left. Um, so there were two ways that we came up with, one is to, um, change the resort tax use, in other words, put it back to the voters, say, "We would like to use resort tax for public health and safety," and in that instance, the tourists pay 77 to 75% of resort tax, so it doesn't necessarily come out of our, our, uh, community budget. The other way, of course, is to, uh, annex the city into the Red Lodge Royal Fire District, which is more difficult, because that would raise everybody's property tax, and it would have, we would have to have 40% of the property owners, uh, sign a petition to put it on the ballot.
That equal 40% of the value.
Yeah.
40% in number and 40% in value is required to do that.
So, um, we thought that going the resort tax direction would be a good start. Um, I did call, uh, to find out when the next, when it could conceivably be on the ballot, and that would be next September, would be the earliest, so it'd be in a year, but we do need to move forward on, on something like that. Um, the problem is, is that without doing something, um, we're gonna end up having to reduce our police coverage from 20, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and, um, you know, that right now the staff is the same as it was in the mid 90s, and we've had a little bit of growth in our population since then, so, um, we just have to be really careful. So, um, that was the bulk of the discussion, we did discuss the, uh, stop sign, the, not the stop sign, the, um, speed limit sign, and the mayor jumped right on that, and got the temporary sign on the south end of town, so that was, uh, that was it.
I'll just give the credit where the credit is due, and that was Chief Rock who-
Again.
Who jumped on that, so.
Great, that was it.
Um, part of that conversation, uh, so that budget conversation is part of the, the presentation, and, and, and kind of the importance of getting this slideshow presentation, and then building it, and then reaching out to work with our media to help get that story out, and there would be some public outreach and kind of say, "Here's, here's the problem we have," we talked a little bit about that last week, "that our property taxes, what we take in goes up by one-half, um, the rate of inflation, um, uh, each of the, uh, the rate of inflation over the last three years, um, and yet, depending on inflation and our union negotiations, what we're paying could go up as high as 4%, and so there's a kind of a built-in problem, uh, that at some point will, will come to a head, so. Um, as we make progress in that, uh, we'll certainly be reaching out to, um, the folks in the media to help us tell that story and get that information out, so that the public can make an informed decision. Because both of those things are basically actions that are up to the public to make, council cannot take those actions. Um, the only thing that we as an administration and council can do to, to ensure the balanced budget, which is a requirement, is, is cut services. So, we'd like to reach out to the public and ask them if we can increase the, the monies available prior to taking that step. Thank you, anything else, uh, Council Chair Conley?
Yeah. Thank you.
Committee Chair, thank you. All right, let's go to admin and finance, uh, this will be, uh, Committee Chair Ronnie.
Um, well, on our agenda is, uh, for discussion tonight, the union contracts, and we are looking to Mayor Westwood to give us a summary of those negotiations, and what the city's getting and what the union is getting, and-
All right, so, you all have a copy of the word document, and it's in the packet. This is something I reached out to, uh, Council President Ronnie, um, as far as how to proceed and, and stuff, so, um, at this point, it is just for, uh, it is just for discussion, um, well, actually, it was, so it is for discussion this time, and then we'll have an approval up for action next time.
Correct.
So what you have in front is for the non-unions, we have two unions, excuse me, the non-police department. We have the police department, which is a very, very simple, and it'll actually be an amendment. Um, they had proposed an MOU, they haven't given us the wording yet, but the MOU, in fact, let me, I can read you a very, uh, easy, quick summary of it. So, um, the unions, both, both unions had asked for a dollar, um, increase, um, and, and basically, uh, what we came up with, um, is that when we did a salary comparison, uh, for public works department, we also did that for our police department, and I'm looking to see if this is the, that's actually the second one. Um, we did a comparison with multiple cities, um, on the, on the public works, it was like six or seven cities, um, with the police, it was four. Uh, the short version is, is we found that we were right exactly in line with, with the other cities. We also wanted to make sure that we retained in line, and the logic for that was to go ahead and move the bookends, um, the bookends to be 1% to 4% depending on inflation. So, um, I'll, I'll start with just kind of summary of the, of the police negotiations first. At the start of these negotiations, we alternatively agreed, we wanted to make sure our staff are appropriately compensated for their positions when matched to other comparable cities and towns in Montana. To validate the appropriateness of our wages, the city conducted a survey of different cities with an effort made to ensure we are considering size, location, and proximity within the state, as well as include cities with similar demographics and needs, such as being a resort community or located in the proximity of a large city. The civic municipalities identified for the police were Laurel, Mile City, and Lewiston. During the study, we found that Red Lodge's wages were similar to the identified comparable cities, to that end, the city feels it is not worrying to make a correct in, correctional wage adjustment of $1, which is what they had requested in their initial discussion. However, it is also the city's intent to ensure our staff remain competitively compensated in the future when compared to other locales within Montana. To that extent, while it was not included within the initial discussion, we would like to adjust the COLA bookends from 1 to 3 to the range from 1 to 4. That'll have the impact on the raises for the year, so it kind of ended up with their dollar, but it also something that projects forward. Anyway, and, and they came back and accepted that for that, but that, because it wasn't a full contact review, that will be just an amendment. Questions on the police?
So you increased-
The simplest of the two.
So you increased it from 1% to 4%?
The bookends were 1 to 3%, and now it's 1 to 4%.
See, one year we had, um, you know, like a 7% inflationary cost of living increase, but our bookends were 1 and 3%, so they could only get 3%, even though inflation was 7%.
Like, like, like the current one.
So, so we increased the bookends from 1 to 4%, because the city would-
To stay competitive?
Yeah, well-
With us to make sure that they're able to maintain cost of living.
We, we can't do a 7% because-
Well, no, there has to be a, we, we-
And, and one of the things we were also going for is, we're hoping to make this be a less painful process in the future, so rather than every year you come and ask for 4, or you ask for 3, or 2, or $1, let's just come up with an algorithm that works automatically, so there's not a need to fix it every couple of years. And that gives us the opportunity to dial in on some other things within the contract, some of which we were able to address this time, and you'll see those in the comments. Um, so, going back to the public work side, um, they had in their existing contract a seasonal, um, shift that was 4/10s as opposed to 5/8. Um, we were able to add some language that basically says, "At the approval of the department heads," because there's multiple departments in there, Ronnie's one department head in that area, uh, Mike Maples is another one that's in that area, um, and, but it also said that accommodate it, we put in the language in there that says, "To, to, I'm trying to think what the exact language is, um, to, to assure proper coverage."
Right.
And so, so they were a little bit concerned about just saying, "It's at the discretion of," and so when we said, "It's at the discretion of to ensure proper coverage," then they were okay with that language.
Not everybody can have Friday off, sorry.
Well, yeah, so one of the things that we went into right off the bat, that there was a lot of resistance, that we abandoned very early on, um, was, "Why is everybody working Monday through Friday?" or, you know, "Do we have that?" And so, so, um, there was a very large resistance to staggered shifts that Saturday and Sunday was the planned workday, they were okay doing Saturday and Sunday as needed, again, to assure coverage. Um, and then the other change that was significant in there is the on-call pay. So, there is, we have folks that are on call, they are not be, they were not being compensated, they're still not currently being compensated, um, but what we said is, "Yes, you should be compensated for that," there was numbers that went back and forth, what we ultimately decided on, rather than a flat dollar when you're on call, is the $3 an hour on call, however, the caveat is, no period has more than 24 hours on it. So if I'm on call for 24 hours, and I come to work for 4 hours, I don't get 24 hours of on-call and 4 hours of pay, I get 20 hours of on-call and 4 hours of I came into the office to work, so no period has more than 24 hours. So, those were the significant changes, um, that were made, or basically the $3 on call with the clarification that it's $4, and then, uh, a lot of places we added that it's up to the department head or the supervisor, I'm trying to think what the, we, we worked to make sure that the language was significant through there. Um, there were a couple of other points that were raised that we made headway on, um, that I think we'll refocus on in- I think we'll refocus on in, in three years, but, but I, I would love to see this thing be half the size it is, because one of the problems we had is that there was so much language that I felt was contradictory as we went through it. I'm also still waiting for the city attorney's feedback on these contracts as well. That's on me, not on him.
Yeah, I, I'm glad that they added the on-call pay. You literally can't do anything.
You're, you're-
You're on call.
You're on call. So you can go camping for the weekend or, you know, you're-
I know that feeling all too well.
Yeah, so I think they, people should be compensated for-
Yeah, and, and so, so it was interesting, because the major things they were asking for was dollars, and, and they had initially asked for like a four dollar an hour increase, whether it was implemented over one, or two, or three years. And what we were able to come back and say is, the data doesn't back that. We were actually second only, the only one that was ahead of us was Livingston, and it wasn't, and it was not significant. So we were, we were in the range, right where we would have hoped to be, and, and so the, the feedback. So by the way, for the, for the main public, for the main public works or that union, the non-police one, specific municipalities identified included Livingston, or excuse me, Lewiston, Livingston, Whitefish, Phillisburg, Columbus, West Yellowstone, and Billings. So we had a wider gap there. We didn't have as wide on the police because there, it was harder to compare apples to apples. During the study, we found that only Livingston exceeded our wages, and even then, not significantly so. Based on this information, combined with the fact the city also pays a closing allowance on the top of the base, on top of the base wage, which is also considered as taxable income, the city feels it is not warranted to make a correction wage adjustment of four-fifty spread over three years as requested in initial discussions. So we said no, but we gave them the reason, and therefore they were able to accept it. However, it is also the city's intent to ensure our staff remain competitively compensated in the future when compared to other locales with Montana. To that extent, the city agrees to adjust the COLA bookends from one to three percent to the range from one to four percent. So the other thing we did by doing the police is we basically kept them the same across the city, which seemed like the appropriate for planning purposes and just for job satisfaction to treat everybody the same way. Additional extension beyond four percent was considered too problematic, given the nature of the state's floating mill levy calculations, which limit the amount of the increase the city receives in property taxes to one-half the rate of inflation over the last three years. If the unprecedented impact of inflation observed over the past few years or another environmental impact should arise, that creates a situation where staff is not competitively compensated, the city will entertain a one-time correction at that time to bring wages back in line. But I don't foresee that happening. And then the other part was the, the city agrees to the on-call compensation of three dollars per hour on call. However, in working that scenario, potential for confusion was identified, to add in, the city wants to clarify that no single hour should be included in multiple categories, and I think I explained that earlier, so I won't go through that wording. We also added lunch hours were not being used consistently, and, and in fact, that the contract stated lunch hours, we have some departments that, so basically they were allowed an optional lunch break, but again, it's after the supervisor department head's approval, whether they work through lunch, and I'll have that in as long as they have appropriate coverage.
And see, I kind of have an issue with that. I think that an employee that works eight solid hours without a break isn't as productive as an employee who has periodic breaks. I see that they're allowed a fifteen-minute break in the first four hours and in the second four hours, but they could glob those together and call that lunch and then skip lunch in the middle.
They, they, they do take the breaks, so that's there. The question is, when it comes to the lunch, and I'll use the example of the front office, because that's the one where I have the, the most direct observation of, if somebody comes through the door and the bell goes off, they jump in and they go help them. So what they're doing is they're eating on the clock, if you will.
Well, that's why you stagger lunches.
And, and they do, but, but what I've done at this point is leave that to the discretion of the individual department heads to manage within, but, but it's their determination whether folks do that or not.
But if they don't take the lunch, they get to leave early.
That is a correct statement.
And I noticed in here it said something about you can take lunch at your desk, at your job site. So if you're at your job site, you're not really resting and taking lunch. Are you talking about eating at your desk, but you're still on, you know?
That, that's the situation I described, yes.
Yeah, I, as a previous employer, I think that the breaks are needed, so if you take a break, you start at eight, you take a break at ten, and then you don't take lunch, and then, so you're working from ten until two, a solid four hours without a break. I just, you know, that's just, just my opinion from experience.
My only concern is the adequate coverage, you know? How, how do you determine who gets, I mean, do you take turns on who? Or is it, like, I've got an appointment this afternoon, so I'm gonna, you know, eat, I'm gonna skip lunch today type of thing, or, you know, and I understand, it's up to the department heads to determine that. You know, it's just, I, I worked in an office and I know how that goes, and when I was the ops leader, we pretty much finally had to say no, because we had, you know, like, take your sick time. If you've got a doctor's appointment in the afternoon, use your sick time, you have to take a lunch. But that was just the, our office was small enough where, you know, everybody all of a sudden wants to skip lunch and leave at three-thirty or four-thirty, and then we don't have any coverage in the office. And to make it fair to everyone, we finally had to say, no, you have to take lunch, if you have a doctor's appointment or an appointment, you should, you know, your comp time or your PTO or whatever.
When, when I reached out to our department heads, they felt comfortable with, that's, that's something that's, that's been in the past, so that's a change. There, there's a couple of different options forward, so.
And, and I guess, like I'm saying, I just feel, I mean, it's up to the department heads, and if they can handle it, that's fine. It just, our office, it didn't work.
The form, the, the motion-
I had the same. Most people would skip lunch, eat it at your desk, and nibble as you go, and then leave early. I mean-
Well, it's not leave early, but leave after eight hours.
That's right, that basically is leaving.
But you're leaving at a null and a-
You're taking your lunch period at the very end of the day, so that you're leaving early. So, and then when everybody does it, so these rules have to be for everybody, so if everybody does it, then that, to me, creates an issue.
So the form of the motion next week will basically be to authorize the mayor to approve the contract as it's presented. It won't be, so council's position really isn't amend the contract and change this, it's approve it.
Right.
Certainly, council has the objective to, the option of not approving the contract. What I would suggest or recommend, I, you may notice, I have, my copy has some, some handwriting on it already. So I've taken this to several department heads and, as, as well as, like I had Brian, who's been part of that union previously, and is kind of currently in the, in the vacancy of, of that, that assistant position, is, is kind of my right-hand man. So I have comments and stuff, some of them we were able to work in this time, some of them are, let's write that down and document it, so we can have that discussion next time. And this is, this is where we bend it up, so.
And honestly, I've never been involved as, you know, a manager dealing with the union. We did not have a manager, you know, a union at, we had a, you know, an HR manual, and that's what you follow, so.
I think everybody here has agreed that they're okay with the department head's approving, so let's move on.
Are there, I don't, I don't want to stifle anybody, other comments or questions?
I did have a question on call-out pay.
Okay.
It says, in the event that an employee gets called out to plow snow, is that the only call-out pay that we're concerned with?
No, no, no. So, so, so call-out pay, like, we have on-call, so, like, if somebody has a broken stormwater or sewer-
Right, right.
And they, it basically, call-out pay is, you can't do it from your phone.
No, I understand that, but you specifically refer to plow snow, not a, an emergency or-
It, it, it does refer to it in other places, too, it's just call-out pay, so that was just one example.
It requires a return to work or to do work-related duties after they have plowed snow. So that does include getting called back in for plowing snow for-
In, anything.
The sentence says, in the event that an employee gets called out to plow snow, that employee will be paid a minimum of six hours' base pay at the overtime rate.
But if, if you search call-out, that's not the only place it shows up. Like I said, there's, there's a lot of repetitive stuff in here.
I was concerned that it was too, too specific.
No, the, the others are in there.
But can I just clarify that, though? When they get called out to plow snow, they get a minimum of six hours, whereas like the water sewer guys, when they get called out, it's a two-hour call-out.
Okay.
Yeah, it even says there, right above it.
So it's very specific.
Yes.
So, yeah, so there's, there are some, some variations in a couple of those uses.
So that's why the plow snow-
And, and the other thing, going back to department head approval, is all of that overtime, which call-out qualifies as, is department head approval. So again, to, to, to Councilmember Miller's point, it requires department head approval so that it doesn't get abused.
I saw that, yes. That was my only two questions, concern.
So, so with, with approval then, what we'll do is we'll move this forward next time with the added expectation that we'll have had the city attorney sign on, on it by then, and I'll get a positive confirmation from him that we're good. Anything else from admin?
Um, yes, I'm sorry. I'm like, it's like lost in the contract, we're good? Yeah. So we have started discussion on, and getting ready to do our annual review of the short-term rental and, and where we're at. We'll have some concrete numbers hopefully at our next meeting, our next admin and finance meeting. We're waiting on the fire department to give us the new number of residences that we have, the updated number that we have. Danae feels that it's, the number has increased quite a bit, and she also made the statement today, I don't want to misquote her, but that the ones after the registrations have come in, the ones that, some have fallen off and some new ones have come in, and it's, it's stabilized compared to where we were after COVID, where we had this big increase. And we brought everybody online as well, too, with our software. Our software did what it was supposed to do, so it seemed like we had this big increase as well, but a lot of it was just bringing people into compliance. So we are not at the cap yet, and I, she doesn't think that we probably will be unless something crazy happens. But we also, in the admin and finance committee, are cleaning up the ordinance. It also needs to be codified into our municipal code, that is not done yet. And part of that ordinance was the good neighbor policy, that's supposed to be in every short-term rental, and council never approved the good neighbor policy. So we are working on the example that was provided, that Chelsea actually found, and we're just kind of going through it. Dennis was at the meeting today. We want our good neighbor policy to be enforceable things that we actually have an ordinance for, because you can't tell someone in a short-term rental that they can't do that when the neighbor can do it. So it has to apply across the board, you can't just-
And the advice was that the, the city one should be specifically to the ordinances
Yes.
that are there. So the, kind of the, if I may?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Kind of it was that council will come up with the guts of this, with attorney buy off, and then we were reaching out to the stakeholders to make sure that the leading into it language was, was soft, so that it was not a put-off. And that there will be a, rather than trying to do like, several of the different companies have their kind of rules and regulations, so it was a goal to try to not have too much duplicate, but then they'll have like their rules, no caps, right? That's not a city ordinance, but there's a lot of management properties that have no cap.
Or no dogs.
No fireworks, on the other hand, is a city ordinance. So there was kind of a, a distinction between those, and, and the advice we received from legal counsel was that our, the one that we put out and required them to include should be nothing but ordinance-based.
That makes sense.
Yes, and then there are also some things in our zoning document that are contradictory to what our actual ordinance is. We, we don't have ordinances for what's in our zoning doc.
You seem surprised.
I know. So, so we, we probably will be putting together a list of things, but we do not have an ordinance for, and leave it up to, I guess, the planning board, do you want to make changes to these, or do you want council to decide whether or not we're going to create an ordinance for them?
That makes sense.
I mean, it, it's just contradictory, you know, we don't have-
Yeah, I'd love to see that list.
Yeah. So, yeah, and if anyone would like to attend those meetings, please do so. We will be continuing the discussion at our next one.
Any, any other questions for Committee Chair Ronnie on admin and finance? All right, thank you. Land use and planning, let's look to Committee Chair Tupid.
We've had very full agendas, by all the textures of the guts of it. So Resolution 3660 is to adopt applications for large and small events on city-owned land. That is specifically to kind of tie in with Ordinance 960 that we were just discussing. It's specifically, Brian Hanna did a wonderful job of putting together two different applications that detail out the requirements for both large and small events, as well as the fee schedules that come along with those, is all posted there based off of the schedules he presented. So we are just going to adopt those applications as written, and then that is also something that if needs adjusting down the road, it will be done through resolution versus including it in ordinance. Then also, we have Resolutions 34, or Resolution 3430, which, again, is the fee schedule, but instead of having an individual fee schedule for the large events and small events, we're going to actually compile it into all of the land use and planning fee schedule. So that will be in a miscellaneous section, so instead of having multiple different documents that we're referring to for any sort of fees, it will now be in one neat, tidy place. Ordinance 911, second amended, camping on city-owned land. So that is an ordinance that got brought to our attention, because it was just a bit messy. Specifically, it brought up, because this is just talking about city-owned land, but it also had a clause in there speaking about private property as well, so we are nixing that, because currently, how it's written in our zoning code, you are legally allowed to sit on, or camp on your own private property, whether it be that commercial or residential. And then we are just specifically reinstating, or reiterating that on public right-of-way, it is not legal to be camping on your streets or on the public right-of-way by parks, those types of pieces. We're also going to clean that up to kind of tie back into our events, to where in there, there's a statement that says that the city may waive the restriction to camp for pre-planned events. That language just needs a little bit of cleaning up. It also said that the council would set a fee. We currently have that just built into our event application and the event fees, so we are going to clean that up as well, to where it will just be, the city will, oh gosh, what was the word? I lost, I don't have my papers.
Can I fall off again?
I'm like, you're good, you do good, keep going.
I'm doing pretty good off memory right now. That, we'll make an exception for a permitted event, city event. So that has to go through the permitting applica, or process and have a full application to be approved, so not just any person that has a pre-planned event can camp on city-owned land, sir.
In the interest of moving forward, with your blessing, can, can we back up just a little bit? So I'm looking at Resolution Number 3660, which is the first one you addressed. My question for this body is, is this ready for action? Next week, I know that, that Councilmember Ronnie had raised some questions, and I think this may lead into the conversation you were on. So this is, this is a resolution to adopt the land use applications. And there's a final whereas, Councilmember Ronnie, I'll let you say your-
Yeah, I, I thought, I dreamed it, because I couldn't find it in the ordinance. It's not in the ordinance, it's in this resolution, where it says that you can waive it with in-kind services for nonprofits. And we talked about this, when we did the ordinance, we had specifically taken that out, because it was so hard to determine if they were meeting that threshold of doing the in-kind, there was no way to track it. So we had taken it out of the ordinance, but now it's back in the resolution.
And so-
Is that where we found it?
Yeah.
So, so the question is, first off, I will add that that is a whereas, but what is the council's pleasure regarding land permits? Do they want to have the opportunity for people to have their land use be waived for nonprofits with in-kind services? So that was done, yeah, so it was basically nonprofits that came in and did that. And that was something that I recall, that we said, yes, that's, when I was there, was that the council did say, yes, that meets the requirements.
Yeah.
Um, and you're saying your vote is that it's gone completely?
It, we did. We, we removed it.
From the ordinance.
From the ordinance. So it's not...
So having it as a whereas is...
You can't do it.
Yep.
Okay. So, so that whereas doesn't exist. Is there anything in the therefor's, um, that needs to be modified in addition to that?
I don't believe so.
You guys all have much better eyes than me to read that off your phones.
We don't have anything on...
So what I'm, what I'm hearing then, let me clarify, is I'm hearing, yes, move forward with three-six-six-zero, but an edit to strike the last whereas before that moves forward.
I was trying to think of an example.
Yes.
What the in-kind service would be.
Well, they, they said that they would clean the bathrooms at the, you know, at Lyons Park or they would, you know, uh, things like that.
I mean, I would almost rather just, if we have the ability to waive the fee because it's a nonprofit, whether it's in-kind or not, like that would be my personal preference. But again, it's not in our ordinance. We're just saying it needs to get stricken from Resolution thirty-six sixty.
Right.
If we would like to add that back in, that could be something that just gets added into the application in the fee schedule.
Well, this, well, this resolution is adopting those applications. So again, the good news is that there's not a right or a wrong answer. There is what is council's preference.
Yeah. I, I just, it became very hard and, you know, convoluted on whether or not their in-kind services were actually meeting the fee.
What I'm hearing right now is that because this whereas is not in the ordinance?
Right.
And that we're not updating the use of city of...
We are. This is adopting the, this is adopting, that is adopting the application.
So mad that I lost my...
Whereas in the interest of the city of Red Lodge to update the use of city-owned property permit to consider the use in-kind services as an alternative to an application fee for nonprofit organizations when deemed suitable by the Red Lodge City Council. So...
The district council.
I say cancel it.
I, it's a hundred dollar fee. And like, it, it's not like they're asking...
I, I, I thought, I thought it was the use per day. So yes, a hundred dollars per day.
And they're not coming to council, like you don't, fees aren't coming to council, correct? Like...
Right.
No, they are not anymore.
Well, that doesn't...
I...
Yeah, I would say strike that whereas.
Yeah, and it also suitable by Red Lodge City Council. I mean...
Yeah, that's why deemed suitable. I was like, they're coming to the council every time. No, no.
Yeah. No, I think that it seems perfectly appropriate to strike that whereas and...
Yeah, let's strike that.
That being said, I don't know if I necessarily want to vote on it tonight because...
No, not tonight. Next week.
Yeah, okay. But yes.
No, we aren't voting on it tonight.
Oh, thank God. Yep. It's like, no, no, no.
No, we gotta...
He's gonna yell at you.
All right. So, yes, bring three-six-six-zero for action next week with that.
Strike.
Strug.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to put the little thing on here that says next week's agenda is getting built. All right. Next is thirty-four thirty, second amended. This is the Red Lodge fee schedule that Brian has updated. Basically, my understanding is what happened is you're moving a couple of lines that were in a standalone ordinance and just moving them to the existing fee schedule.
Yeah, we are moving those to the fee schedule. Just basically I've been waiting for an Excel document where I can actually add them to the fee schedule.
Providing that gets done, is this up for action?
I need it like editable. That's the problem. Yeah.
Is, is this up, is this up for action next week if that's done?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
This is how we get things done.
Yeah, no, I, I wanted to have it ready for today. So...
Excellent. All right. Nine eleven, second amended.
Okay.
So I think we do need to make some edits to that. Um, just per our conversations today, I felt like we were very confident with it, but...
But, but I think what happened is you were bringing this conversation into this conversation.
It got very confusing. Yeah. Can we just like bypass that embarrassing day of part of my day? Thank you.
I don't remember it. So...
He does that.
The way this is, the way this is presented right now is that number two is stricken.
Correct.
And, um...
No. Oh, yes. The original number two, yes.
The original number two is stricken. Um, I recall that there was a, a, there was an improvement to the title, but I'm not seeing a highlight here. Um, overnight parking use of city-owned lands and dedicated parks and right-of-way. So what I'm hearing you say, so this is an ordinance that will require two readings, but you're saying you don't feel this is ready for discussion yet it, not, not for action yet at next time?
I think it can be ready for action next meeting. I will refer to the rest of the...
For a public hearing next week?
Yeah. I mean, so the rest of land use and planning, I felt like we felt pretty confident in what we were talking about by the end.
Yeah, once we, once we figured out that we're striking number two and that fees were not fees but fines.
Yep. So basically, as long as we get Dennis to review this by next council meeting, I would feel comfortable making that an action.
Now, this, this does not have the...
Fines.
This does not have the fines at all for like, if you're, if you're camping on city land and get a ticket.
Right. Yeah, that's what we said during the meeting and we're going to add that.
So are fines going to come back then?
They are coming back. That was part of our conversation earlier.
You can't blame me for being confused during that conversation.
Well, at the very end, we made it very clear.
I was comatose at that point.
We trained that.
Well, that's the good listening.
Okay. So I'm going to put that as moving to action and you guys need to get on it in the next day or two and get those changes so that it can be ready.
Okay.
Again, remember any conversations that you have in the background are with three or less. So not to create electronic quarrel.
Sorry. I'm a cool...
All right. Are we good on all three of those? So all three of those are going ahead and moving forward for, for next time?
Please.
Well, congratulations. You guys did a hell of a job. You made a lot of progress.
Yeah, I think we backtracked quite a bit too.
A lot of circling?
There's a lot of circling.
I know this has been on discussion in the committees for many, many, many months. So I'm glad it's come to an end and glad we're all comfortable.
Ever since you joined, so...
All right. Do, do you want to speak to the lease or do you want to toss that to me?
I'll toss that to you.
So in your packet, there were, you will recall, there was a lease that came up earlier in the year that we determined, um, had not been reviewed and had an RFP for many years. There were several problems identified by legal counsel with the lease. What you have inside the packet is a, a new lease that was put forth by council. Um, so it's just if you guys have any comments or concerns about that that you want to bring forward. Um, there was also a copy of the RFP to throw out that we wanted to make sure, um, addressed the needs of what the land was and what the limitations were. And so within that, there's some language that says, "All parties are hereby advised that approximately twenty years ago, the area was used at disposal for the city sewer lagoon sludge. All restrictions on the use of said lands due to the sludge have long since elapsed. However, the city may need to utilize said land for future lagoon cleanoff. If required, the city will provide notice of termination as set forth in the lease agreement." So then that comes back to the lease agreement. What is not included, um, in your packet is the letter of cancellation to send to them, which we will also, we've actually already given them the existing lease owners, holders, uh, copies of this information. We also received, um, from a staff member, uh, an updated copy, um, with some language that, um, I have, I have mixed responses to. Um, but ultimately it's you guys who need to, um, he basically brought in a land lease between two private parties. And so he discussed things, um, like who's taking care of, of the weeds within it. Um, and he had added some comments that it was like forple negatives and so I was confused. Um, and then he had talked about, um, having a lease based on what sort of livestock and how much is there. Um, my, my thoughts are provide this to the city attorney and, and figure out, you know, take, accept that as input to see if there's any revisions, but I wanted to see if there's any revisions, um, from this group as well. Ultimately, um, council's next action and it will be in approving the lease. Once an RFP is completed, um, then because this is city land again, council plays a role in executing the mayor to enter into this agreement. Um, having said that, I want to make sure you're happy with the RFP and the lease so we know what that answer is when we get to that standpoint. So I don't know that this is something that needs to be for action next time, but is there any other feedback that you guys had as you reviewed that that...
Typically, um, most pasture lease is based on the number of heads on, on the property. I mean, that, that's been the standard in Montana. Um, so I, I think we need to make sure that we are kind of following that same standard for, for pasture lease. Um, because it absolutely determines the wear and tear on the land and the erosion on the land. If they have a hundred head out there versus ten, you know, so you, you charge a quartering rate.
Did you see that? Did you see the one with the, with the red?
Counsel, Counselmember Daniel.
I, I do not have that.
Yeah, he dropped it off at our meeting.
So there are a few in here that, you know, we, we were looking at, um, number four with weed control was a little questionable. Kind of confused on that one. Um, and then he added another one to like after eighteen, there's one for nineteen, there's one. And then there's on fifteen, with fencing, he added, um, some other stuff. So I can see what...
So, so I said, I will pass that along to, to, to legal counsel.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but what else, what is the other feedback from council that they would like to see in that lease? Cause I guess is my, is my ask.
His suggestion on weed control was that the city does the weed control.
And it's my understanding, we have done that historically on that land. I just thought it was worded funny.
But it also controls what's being used to control the weeds. So that's probably a really good, uh, suggestion. Also, he brought up the insurance, um, insurance policies, you know, you're not sure of the cost of insurance, asking them a lease, a lease fee to pay for a million dollar po- policy on the property.
That's pretty standard.
Yeah, I feel like...
It's like, yeah, I mean, he, he needs, um, if you have a, a farm owner's policy, typically it's a, the minimum liability limit is a million and they need to list the property, the legal address of what they're leasing as part of, it's just listed as one of their, their properties.
Okay, good.
Only if it's non-owned, uh, but that's where they're grading.
And of course, he did do the carrying capacity, suggested ten to fifteen units for this amount of ground, which we liked. Um, fencing, um, last year the city bought the fencing material and the lease fee was the one who was to put it up. So that was, um, included in the, in this lease. And the last was the personal property. Um, lease fee at its sole cost and expense may place or install such personal property on the premises as lease fee shall deem necessary for the efficient conduct of the business to be carried in the, therein and therefore, I don't know what all that was.
I, I think my recollection was that there's some water tanks that they had put in to, to bring water in.
Exactly. And their personal, there's, because there's no water there. So that's their personal property.
Right. I, I think that we wouldn't want some oversight of what actually gets put on.
Yeah, I would say in this situation, you know, non-permanent structures, something along those.
Yeah.
Right, a list of...
That language.
Cause you can put a pole barn, you know, like a, 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 a...
Lean to...
Yeah, a lean to thing that you can move if they, you know, some type of shelter that you can do that without, you know, having it permanently installed. Um, definitely.
In permanent alteration of land, that's...
And the fencing, I mean, I, I don't know, whenever we leased farmland, we were responsible to put in whatever fences we, we needed. Uh, so I've never actually heard of, you know, someone paying for, for it. It can be very expensive and it would...
Did you have to get it approved from the lessor when you did that?
To, to change, to do the fencing, no?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, depending on what you do, yeah.
So lease fee puts in the fence, but I would think, I, if I owned the land, I would want you to, I would want to sign off before you put the fence in.
Yeah, yeah. That's how you should, but, uh, but...
Permission, but not paint.
But the city shouldn't pay for the material.
Which they did last year.
I'm like, because pretty soon, I mean, you could be putting more into it than you're getting for the wound.
Yeah.
I mean, fencing is very...
Well, we're revisiting this lease because it was identified that there was some issues that needs to be revised in this article.
Yeah, cause I would absolutely just say, you know...
Well, this one, there's a legal description of the property.
I know. I, I guess I would say, I mean, we want to be, it behooves us to be, you know, a dollar's head and at the end of the day, you know?
Okay.
Otherwise, why lease it?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like just... Fencing can be destroyed by the stock.
Right, exactly.
So why would the city have to pay to replace it?
Exactly.
And I, I think just any sort of improvements or alterations to the land need to be approved by city.
Okay.
And, and as far as the weed control goes, I mean, livestock creates weeds. So there again, I kind of...
That's where they come from? I didn't know they created them. I knew they transported them sometimes, but...
They do. Yeah. They, they eat the food and they, yep.
And they turn it into weeds?
They, they do. They can.
I thought I understood how biology worked, apparently. I missed a chapter about a farmer.
If you feed them hay, you're bringing in, you know, there can be weeds in the hay.
But they're just, yeah, okay. They're not making it. Okay. I'm good. All right. Any other, I have captured all of those comments and will, um, update and then bring an updated copy for council. Anything else I want to include in that?
Nowhere in here it says that it can't be used for food animals.
And that's, if you go back to the RFP, that, that, that...
Yeah, it's...
Control is like thirty-six months. So it expired eighteen years ago.
So it doesn't have to be, I mean, they could be used for food animals.
So that, that if you go look, if you go look at the RFP proposal, that discusses that.
Twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Only twenty?
I said approximately twenty years ago. The area was used at a disposal for the city sewer lagoon sludge. All restrictions on the use of said land due to the sludge have long since elapsed.
But they could start again tomorrow.
But, yep. If required, they could do it.
So should that be included in the lease?
It is. It is.
It will.
That could be...
In the RFP.
Yeah, that it would be, that we would know.
It would change everything.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from council on that? All right. Any other questions? For land use and planning to, uh, address to, uh, Committee Chair Tupin at this point in time?
One thing I have suggested is that there, the subdivision rules and regulations haven't been updated since, oh my God, I don't know when. And I think that's something that's going to be coming down the pipe from this board to the planning board, to look at those subdivision regulations.
Well, the good news is we're about to clean up our agenda pretty well, so we'll have some space. We'll put that on the, the future checklist.
And, and you are part of that committee, so you can help ensure that. All right. Hearing nothing else, once, twice, three times, um, let's wrap it up with, uh, Public Works Standing Committee and, uh, we will look to, I know you guys have co-chairs now. Who's, who would like to present this? Uh, Councilmember Keys or Councilmember...
I think Chris asked me to, to present, which I can only imagine considering...
She, she struggles with her voice.
Yeah. Um, so yes, uh, today I'll keep it very short and sweet. Alan Best did a wonderful job of drafting up, uh, grants for Northwestern Energy for solar carports over by the Arts Guild as well as, um, solar on top of the roof at the restaurant at Lyons Park. Uh, so we are currently working on that. Mike Maples is reviewing that to make sure that that all looks good. Sustainability Board has been reviewing that. And then we're also waiting for input from the Arts Guild specifically. Um, then I will draft up a resolution to be able to bring that to council. That would be very similar to grants that we have done in the past where it'll be essentially a pass-through almost, but it'll be us applying that into funds. So one thing that is nice with that as well is we did budget for matching funds for this already. So it's not additional money coming out of our budget. Um, I, I heard Alan sneeze. Did I cover that, Alan?
Uh, bring it back to the table?
Yep, bring it back to the table. Um, so then also we're going to, we have the discussion of the dissolution of the pool committee. They feel that they have done their job. They feel that things are running. They feel that our public works department is running the pool and there's no longer a need for, uh, a pool committee. So we are going to be looking at dissolving that committee. It was built by resolution. It was voted on by resolution. So we are going to dissolve it with resolution.
Do you remind me, were you guys going to put together draft or did we need to ask council to do that?
I think I specifically looked at sent it to you.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah.
I gave her a very direct eye contact.
If you want to, if you want to ask the attorney, yeah, so...
Yep.
So, no, I just definitely need to get me a copy of it, how we...
I've, I've, I've got those too that I can give to you right here, so...
Okay, and we can just make a dissolution of it.
And then other than that, we did have, most of the park, or the public works update that we had was pretty much discussed in mayor's comments. Um, they're doing a great job. They're really busting through things. Um, there's a long list that honestly, man, I wonder, is there any way we can get these included? And these are included in correspondence, correct? Can we get...
We, we, we can. I think, I think that's...
That'd be great. I think that'd be super helpful for folks.
The printout.
Um, yeah, the printout. Mike does a great job of putting together a full list of his whole honeydew list and what he's been working on. So it might just be easier to have that in our correspondence.
Yeah.
Um, and then in terms of park boards or parks and sustainability... Um, and then, in terms of park boards, or Parks and Sustainability Board, uh, again, working on some of those grants, as well as looking at Arbor Day grants for the future, specifically looking at using some of the studies we've already had in the past, and then utilizing those for funding to get rid of trees, dead dangerous trees within our community, um, as well as doing smaller-scale tree dispersment and some seedlings, those types of pieces. Not like, quite the scale of trees that we brought in this past year, but also trying to eliminate some of the stress that was actually put on staff. So, that is the rough overcap of Public Works.
Just, just for the record, um, that pool committee was created with Resolution three-five-five-three, and then it was amended with Resolution three-five-nine-eight, so that's now in the record. But here's hard copies of both of those, so you have those to, to work from. All right, um, correspondence. We've had a request to include, um, to include the, the Public Works update, and, and also, um, we've had previous conversation about the police summaries.
Oh, that's great.
My only, uh, comment on that is realize that those are gonna be two weeks in arrears, probably, because the information we get is, is produced pretty real-time.
That's fair.
Where packets go out on Friday, it's not gonna be representative of that, so it'll be in review. It'll be in arrears. Any other correspondence?
Uh, did get notice from, uh, things have already been addressed in terms of paving, but we did address those earlier on, so.
Okay.
Uh, just concerns with providing notification to the folks, but it sounds like we're already taking care of that, so.
All right, um, we do have some, some time left. I'm gonna go ahead and open up for public comment. This is for the public to comment, uh, on anything within the city purview. We'll go ahead and open that at this time. If you step to the board, uh, be respectful, uh, address your comments to the chair. All right, um, and I opened it, so anyone from the room? Any online, going twice, going three times? We will go ahead and close the public comment, and I will entertain a motion on item thirteen.
I'll move to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for your patience for-